Good evening and welcome to the Township of Clark Workshop Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, September 2nd, 7:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoff.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Mazzarella.
Here.
Councilmember Manetti.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connor is absent. Councilmember Toll.
Here.
Council President Smith.
Here.
Please rise, please lead, and send them on to silence.
Pledge of allegiance to God, I am the United States of America, and to your Republic for whose stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act as an act of notice of this meeting has been provided by mailing the annual scheduled meetings to the Star Ledger, the Leader, Union County Local Source, and tapping to Clark by posting such annual meeting schedule on the bulletin board in town hall reserved for such announcements, as well as the official website of the township and a proper filing of said notice.
Thank you. We move to proposed ordinances and discussion number one.
Discussion on the first ordinance. It is an ordinance to amend Chapter 84 entitled Animals of the Code of the Township of Clark to prohibit the sale of dogs and cats by retail pet stores in Clark.
Great, thank you. Mayor Albany, if you want to begin?
Yes, so in general, I did a little research on this because we had done the, you know, other passage of ordinances recently. And there's about, I don't know, a dozen or more stores that do sell puppies and cats in the stores, and for the most part, most of them are all puppy mills. So pretty much in the state of New Jersey, if you're going to a retail establishment in a township, my belief, because I've done some research, that they're pretty much puppy mills. Now, people have other ways of getting dogs. I just feel that, parallel with that, we've got a lot of people in the state that are adopting a lot of dogs, you know, sponsoring dogs, doing all different types of care for dogs that don't have homes, whether they take them out for the day, or foster parenting. And I think there's a big trend in doing things like that, where they're adopting dogs. And I thought this would be good for our township.
So do any, and I don't know this question, like a shake or pause or something, do they have certified breeders who supply them with the dogs and cats? Or they don't, and they're getting it from?
I had someone in the audience say, no, they don't. But I didn't get into that depth, but the, what I read was that pretty much they're just puppy mills, you know? And they're, you know, I think from what we've done recently, you know, this is something that I think would be good for the council to pass, so that we're not promoting puppy mills in the town, or we don't have the opportunity, won't have to be faced with that issue of doing an investigation on that.
So besides, I love dogs, but I'm not a dog owner, and I've never owned an animal because I'm too busy to have that. My social life's too important to be bogged down by another kid, so to speak. But if I was to want a dog, where would I go? Do I have to go find a breeder? Do I have to find, I guess, a rescue place where there's a cat or a dog?
There's a lot of information about rescues.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a little idea.
A lot of people are adopting dogs that come from, I'll say, the Virginia area, that part of the country, a lot of hound dogs, or hound dog breeds, and they ship them up here frequently. I have a friend who meets them on the turnpike. She foster parents the dogs for a period of time, until the new family that's adopting them takes them. You know, there might be like a time lag, they can only do it so many weeks from now, she'll foster parent them, they meet on the turnpike, pick up the dogs that are brought up here by the volunteers. It's all volunteers that do it, there's no money involved, no payments, and they have to qualify to adopt the dogs. So that's one way. Plus, we have all the dogs that are in, you know, in shelters across the state of New Jersey.
In the midst of discussion, Mr. Cohen, correct?
Yeah.
Can I ask him to come up?
Sure.
He was the one. Mr. Cohen, I'm here. Yeah, because he was here last time, we passed your ordinance, and you're, cause I guess be the expert in the room to kind of give us a one or two minute.
Sure. First of all, I want to thank you for taking this up.
It was on, maybe?
I'll turn this off, please.
I have specific answers to your questions. First of all, in New Jersey, there is a law, it's called the Pet Purchase Protection Act, and it does spell out, among other things, how the stores are supposed to get dogs. They are supposed to use breeders that are certified by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and these breeders are not supposed to have certain inspection violations within the past two years. To answer your second question about where people could get a dog other than a pet store, pet stores themselves will tell you, and it's true, that dogs from pet stores only account for about 5% of the sales in New Jersey. So 95% of people are getting their dogs elsewhere, whether it be from a rescue, or a shelter, or a breeder, or a friend, you know, whatever. The stores do not amount to a significant percentage of sales, but it's still, the number, the raw number is still in the thousands of dogs. And I wholeheartedly agree with the mayor, not that the stores are puppy mills, the stores are fined, for the most part. Well, I shouldn't have said that because I could give you a chart where seven of them, there's, there's more than a dozen, there's about 18 right now in the state that sell dogs. New Jersey stores typically don't sell kittens, it's just dogs and other animals. Seven of them, within the last couple of years, have been fined for in-store violations of the Pet Purchase Protection Act. They're supposed to provide information for consumers in their stores about the breeders, about where the dogs come from. When the law was passed in 2016, just about all of them were fined for not doing it. We, some animal advocates, got the Division of Consumer Affairs to go around again to some stores in the last couple of years, and like I said, seven have been fined for ignoring the law again. So the puppy mills is where the dogs come from. These breeders that they use are typically concentrated in the Midwest. It's a, I mean, I find it kind of interesting, but it's a long story. These are people that got crowded out of, of little farms, by factory farms, you know, they lost their ability to make a living, so they turned to dog breeding. So we're talking about states like Iowa, Missouri, Illinois, Kansas, et cetera, Indiana. And that's where the dogs come from. New Jersey has very few USDA certified breeders. They don't get their dogs from New Jersey. So they go to these, these breeders in these other states where the, the attitude, the lifestyle, is not exactly the way we see the way dogs should be treated, especially on a commercial basis. We're not talking about people who have dogs in their home, and they're selling a couple or a dozen a year. These are breeders who have hundreds of dogs on their property, and to a certain extent, they have a choice. They either spend a lot of money caring for the dogs properly, or they spend less money caring for the dogs and make more of a profit. And it's hard for me to understand at this point, with all the information that's out there, how anybody could argue that the situation is not, that the vast majority of these breeders have chosen profit over animal welfare. But I would strongly argue that they have. And that's why this, this issue has taken root. Eight states now have passed a statewide law, they don't allow stores anywhere in their state to sell dogs, because of this connection to these, these puppy mills out in the Midwest. New York is the most recent one to do it, and there's great fear that these stores are going to start to move into New Jersey. In fact, one already has, I think it's a three hole. A second guy tried to set up a warehouse in Roselle, and we put him out of business when we found, we found out about that, because Roselle has an ordinance prohibiting this. New Jersey leads the nation in these types of ordinances, we've got 149, which I know we've got over 500 towns, but I still think that's a lot, you know, it's a quarter of the population. And the simple fact, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, but the simple fact is if you do enough of the research, and, God is my witness, I have, I'm a retired teacher, I don't like to say things unless I have the facts behind me. You can, you can go to two places, you can go to the USDA database, where they keep a collection of inspections of these, of these breeders, and you can go to something else that the Humane Society of the United States, which has changed its name, they're now called Humane World for Animals. Every year, they expend enormous amounts of time and money to put together a list that they call the Horrible Hundred. It's not a list of necessarily the worst 100 dog breeders in America, what they say is it's a representative list of what puppy mills are like in America. And I have spent much of my time taking breeder lists that the stores are required to submit every year, and matching them up with breeders that happen to appear on these horrible hundred lists. There's a lot more overlap than you, than I would ever want to see, than anybody would ever want to see. Within the last few years, over 100 instances of breeders used by New Jersey stores have appeared on one or more horrible hundred lists. And, I mean, I can get into some of the reasons that these stores end up on these lists, we're, you know, we're talking about dead dogs, we're talking about overflowing waste, we're talking about dogs, you know, in cramped cages, walking in their own excrement, being peed and pooped upon by dogs in cages above them. I mean, these are the reasons that these breeders get on these lists. And the stores, tell me when I'm going too far, please, let me know if you want to make a stop.
If you can wrap it up, then we'll see if I'm ready.
Yeah. The stores are adamant in saying that they only use the best breeders, you know, we only use the very best breeders, and we have evidence that that's just not true. They use some of the worst breeders. One of the things at the heart, that the Humane Society does that the USDA doesn't, is the Humane Society gets into state inspections, which are oftentimes much more revealing than USDA inspections. The USDA currently has 77 inspectors for 17,000 facilities that they need to inspect. Besides breeders, there's research facilities, and zoos, and, you know, brokers, all kinds, 77 for 17,000. So a lot of these breeders don't even get inspected every year. Most of them don't get inspected every year. So it's a problem. You've got a store in Clark that I believe has endorsed a state bill, I think we talked about that when we passed the resolution. They're one of the stores that have said they're in favor of the state passing this law. Your other pet stores, Pet Co., Pets Mom, Pet Co., they don't usually come down one way or the other on this, but obviously they don't sell dogs.
I, oh, yes, are you part of the Humane Society, or are you on your own, or?
I volunteer. I mean, I'm a volunteer, like I said, I'm a retired teacher, I don't get paid for anything. I'm in this because I discovered the problem, and I became fascinated with it, and I love dogs.
But are you by yourself, or you have a group that you're associated with?
No, I'm kind of by myself. I had a group, but we're getting older, and the other people, they can't travel as much as is required anymore. I mean, I live in Fayetteville, so this is.
My, my question to you is, I remember a few years back, Mayor, I believe you remembered as well, the owner of Shake Up Work came before us.
Yes, Jeff Morton.
And said that he does use certified breeders. Now, have you researched that particularly?
Oh, yeah. I'm in the process of doing the 2024 breeder lists right now. They're always a year behind. Last year's breeder list aren't, weren't due until May of this year. So I'm going through their stuff right now.
And how do they rank, because?
Shake Up All?
Yeah.
He's actually currently, he's better than most. He's kind of gotten, I would say, he's gotten his act together. He's the, he's the so-called leader of a group that he calls the Coalition of Responsible Pet Stores.
Right.
There used to be seven stores, they're down to five now. A lot of his partner stores are not too good at all, but he in particular has gotten better. I mean, I can give you an example of something I just found yesterday. You know, a lot of this stuff isn't.
Should we be naming places, though?
Yeah, I don't think you should, yeah.
You, you, we can hear it, but it might not be a good idea for you.
Well, like I said, I don't say anything that I don't have facts for. And I've, I've spoken in front of places with Mr. Morton many times, and he'll come before you if you decide to move forward with this, I guarantee you. He grew up in Clark.
I'm not his lawyer, I'm the town's lawyer, I mean, certainly listen to whatever anyone wants to share with us, but.
In a broad perspective, you have found some stores that do work with certified breeders, and most don't, correct?
No. It's not a question of whether or not the breeders have a USDA license. Most of them do. There are stores that use breeders who are not certified, and that's a clear violation of New Jersey law. They should not be doing that. And unfortunately, this is another problem with this, Consumer Affairs won't investigate that at all. I've submitted.
Councilman Manetti?
Yeah, I have a question. So you're saying that if I own a pet store, and I say I want to go out and sell puppies, and I'm going to go to some of these breeders, which are USDA, they're certified, correct?
Well, they're licensed.
They're, they're licensed. They may not be in compliance of the rules and regulations that governs them. Is that, you're saying, so I could be getting a puppy from a mill or from a breeder that is not following the rules?
Correct. And that happens sometimes. Now, there's the strict letter of the law rules, and then there's the horrible hundred rules. There are breeders on the horrible hundred list that technically are in compliance because the USDA either doesn't inspect them, or they don't care to list what they find.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Cohen, please, go. I appreciate, thank you. Anyone else, if you need to come up, you can come up, play around in the meeting.
Well.
Mayor Albany, do you have anything else you want to add to? Because I know you did a lot, I know Mr. Cohen sent a lot of information, I know you also did some research and sent it to a certain.
Can I, can I hand out something? Would that be okay?
Yeah, sure. Actually, if you could, give it to me, I'll hand it, you're saying that I would.
You know, you could throw around so many facts, and you guys will get drowned in information. Sometimes it's the pictures that tend to kind of really give you an idea of what's going on.
So, I got a question, because on the state level, I read this before, the Humane Pet Store Bill is proposing, or aims to ban the retail sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits raised in commercial breeding facilities.
Right.
But on our ordinance, we put in prohibit the sale of dogs and cats. Are we not including rabbits or other types of animals, or is it just dogs and cats in particular?
That word is dogs and cats, right?
This is the sample of the ordinance that Mr. Cohen proposed.
Yeah, I would love it if you had rabbits. And that's a big problem, too.
Which one has the rabbits on it?
It says, "In current legislation like New Jersey pending Humane Pet Store Bill, which aims to ban the retail sale of dogs, cats, and rabbits raised in commercial breeding facilities, promote adoption via shelters," it's on page three of the information.
Would that be a question you ask in general?
And just, well.
This is, you know, what was put together for council. No, not me.
You're asking to amend it to have rabbits?
No, no, I'm just asking if that's, if, if the, if the ban at the state level becomes dogs, cats, and rabbits, will this ordinance have to be changed to meet that legislation?
We can do that tonight, right, before we?
You're going to amend it, right?
Yeah.
Well, there's nothing to do.
What are you doing?
The ordinance discussion. Change the draft ordinance.
Exactly.
Yeah, rabbits.
This is the purpose of what we're.
Is rabbits a big thing with the kids today?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A couple needs to know.
There are. I know people that travel around with their rabbits.
I think that if the state act passes a, a statute rendering also the sale of rabbits illegal, our, whether our ordinance includes it or not, they can't be sold in town, because the state statute would prevent it. We could always, we, 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 we could always expand it at that time, or include it there. But that's the purpose of the workshop, is for you guys to determine what you want included in your ordinance. This is, this is apparently a form where this gentleman's provided to us, and that's what you'll be considering, but you don't have to adopt that word for word, you can modify it in your, the council, you think for us.
It probably makes sense to have the rabbits if the state has it. It's a problem in council.
I think so.
I just wanted to have something to add, when I was looking at our current code book with the health, health officer, it somehow says that any license, I can't see it right now, would, it would come out of my office, but it should come out of his office. So if we're going to adopt this, we should make that change at the same time. It makes no sense for an animal license to come out of my office. So I don't know why it doesn't say health officer, but it should be the health officer.
I mean, if we need more time to work on it, we can wait till the next week, you know?
So if, if you plan to.
Or if you want to discuss the changes tonight.
Well, I think the, is there anyone opposed to the ordinance tonight? Councilman Hoff, Mazzarella, this, so I think we're good with the, with the ordinance, it's just a question, the one we should probably, obviously, goes to health officer.
Yeah.
And then the second thing is, do we have the rabbits, do we not? And I think I'm fine with that, unless someone's opposed to it, I mean, I've had family members that had rabbits as pets. All right, so.
So dogs, cats, and rabbits.
Do that. So I gotta get a mover first?
Some move.
Councilman Toll, you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Hoff. All right, thank you. Are you ready to move over to resolutions?
First resolution is authorizing the sale of certain property located on block 125, lot 11, on Halliday Street, excuse me, which is owned by the Township of Clark, not required for public purposes pursuant to NJSA 40A colon 12 dash 1.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Councilman Toll, you have a second?
I'll second that, thank you, Councilman Manetti. Pretty black and white.
Yeah, it's the same thing we've been doing evaluating properties throughout the town that we're maintaining, and it's costing us money to maintain, and it's not used for public purposes, so it's not a park, it's too small.
Now, this lot's a little undersized versus the.
Correct, there were new, there were new variances, so. I believe it's like, I think it was a little lot.
It was four feet and.
Yeah.
I think it was a little less than four feet in the, with.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah, they would have to go, yeah, buy it, and it's, they would also have to.
Is there an adjoining property who's interested in this property, or we're just putting it out there?
Yeah, we're putting it out there, I mean, similar to the other one, there was an adjoining property, didn't take it, actually didn't even bid on it.
Interesting, okay.
Number three. Three is authorizing the installation of fire alarm systems at the municipal building and renovation center, fire headquarters, and fire station number two, through use of a cooperative pricing system.
You gonna move her on a little bit? Thank you, Councilman Mazzarella, a second.
I'll second that, please.
Thank you, Councilman Toll. Anything to add to it?
I mean, as we discussed, it's end of life, and whatever, we're creating.
Thank you. Number four.
Corps renewing participation in the Arrive Together program to enhance and support response to certain behavioral health crisis calls, and authorizing Captain Miguel Acaboo, Patrol Division Commander, Officer in Charge, to execute and deliver the memorandum of understanding.
You have a mover?
I have.
Thank you, Councilman Hoff.
I'll second that, thank you.
Councilman Hunt?
Yeah, this is, you know, we did this a few years ago, and we're just renewing it, it's when one of our officers, who's a little travel around, a mental health expert, to respond to mental health issues.
Can I just, also, I had a conversation with Captain Watt today. Captain, do you want to get up and, do you want to discuss the change to the resolution that we talked about?
Yeah, sure.
Just turn the microphone on.
I think it's.
No, I turned it off.
Oh, you turned it off? It's just on the right case, man.
Yeah, yeah. Take it, man?
Okay, yes.
So it's not really done much of a change, just that the, there is no new memorandum of agreement. The last memorandum of agreement that we signed, I think expired six thirty twenty-five, they're going to extend it, there's a provision in section nine, I think extended by a letter for up to a year. So the prosecutor's office told me today, they're going to have a letter coming out within the next couple of days that will extend it to six thirty two thousand twenty-six. So it's not a new memorandum, it's the same one.
We're going to change the language slightly in the resolution.
Okay.
That's before the council, right? Is that what you talked about?
Yes, yeah. So I think that referenced the new memorandum, am I correct? Yeah, this is the same one, just extended.
Great, thank you. Five?
Campus Ward contract for the 2025 Capitol Road improvements, the opening is September ninth.
Do you have a mover?
Some move.
Thank you, Councilman Toll, you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Hoff.
It is what it is, it's really.
If I can interject here, I know we have to talk about it yet, but the seven brew developers agreement, can we get that on for?
Yeah, I mean, we just got the okay today, so, but we always.
Well, I got to talk to you about it, there was a couple of issues you and I have to back, but.
Well, but, yeah, we, we add all the time, thank you, because we workshop in the, in the actual.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to raise that, so maybe we can put that on the agenda for the next basis.
Okay, well, we got to see what the issue's of before I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, well, we can take it on, we're just, if, if, if we don't want to add it, we, we, we can certainly add it later if you would prefer. They're pushing me, that's all.
We'll get it, I just, if it's ready.
Consent agenda, the following items are considered routine and non-controversial items by the Township Council, and will be enacted upon by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda to be discussed and voted on, following the approval of the remaining items listed on the consent agenda. First item is appointing Christie Viera as alternate insurance fund commissioner to serve on the New Jersey Municipal Self Insurers Joint Insurance Fund. Next is authorizing the tax collector to settle a tax appeal for block 69, lot 12.0101, as authorized by the Tax Court of New Jersey for credit issued in the amount of $23,756.32. And eight is authorizing the township, the tax collector to refund overpayment of sewer fees in the amount of $229.16.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Councilman Toll, you have a second?
I'll second that, please, you, Councilman Hunt.
All right, now we move to public comments at this time, I'll open the meeting to the public. Public comment portion of the meeting is to allow the public to bring the council's attention, their concerns, or comments in accordance with NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 12A and the Code of the Township of Clark. Each person addressing the council should give their name and the town in which they reside to depart, or remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and shall not exceed five minutes' duration, and to conclude. At the conclusion of the statements or questions from a member of the public, the council president at his or discretion may choose a response or not response. If anyone would like to come forward, please do so.
Hello. Hi, John Bruce and Clay, um, both ladies already said, I really like the ordinance with the cats and the dogs. I think that's the right choice and I appreciate that you guys are taking that notice of that. Um, I had just a couple of questions, the tax appeal, um, settlement? I was just curious, it's like twenty-four thousand dollars almost, is that one year or is that multiple years?
Two years, two years.
Two years, okay. Uh, and then I just wanted to quickly follow up, maybe the VA might not have the information here, but we were talking about the cell phone power rental thing in the budget a few weeks ago.
Uh, yes, due to coming to my office and I went through all the files, you never did, even after the last meeting, you didn't come.
Okay, um, I thought, said that we were going to talk about that later, I mean, I don't remember.
I'm not gonna bring the hundred and ten page budget and go through everything with you in a council meeting. I said if you'd wanted any, any questions, come to my office and if you want to do it just before the left, next meeting, feel free.
Okay, so before that next meeting, we'll, we'll check it out?
Tell me when you want to come in?
Okay, we'll set something up. I just wanted to check that, I guess I misunderstood, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Uh, the, the taller one, you can pull it down to the side. Please, there you go. Good evening, um, Gillian Cullen.
You just need to speak into it, um, you're next to it, there you go.
Gillian Cullen, Clark. I'm happy that the town is considering this ordinance. Uh, just so you're aware, our animal control, Associated Humane, in the month of August, they brought in two hundred dogs off the streets. Most, some of them are owner surrenders. Um, they took in sixty dogs the last week of the month. Uh, right now, they're in need of eight dogs to be out by nine, nine twenty-five. Oh, is that better?
Yes.
There we go.
Started. Okay, Associated Humane in Newark is our animal control. Uh, they took in two hundred dogs in the month of August, which is a lot. The last week of August, they took in sixty dogs, okay? Right now, they're overloaded. They have eight dogs right now to need to be out by nine, nine twenty-five, which is a week from now. Just so you're aware, our puppy mills are not, we had one in Scotch Plains in twenty twenty and there was a hundred and thirty dogs in a home in Scotch Plains and they were taken over by the Union County Prosecutor's Office and most of them were farmed out to different rescue groups. Uh, we do have several rescue groups right in Union County and I helped them with, uh, funding as far as doing fundraisers and getting the word out on Facebook. So, uh, Sheikah Paul, I know Larry, I can't, I can't go in that store. And there's a couple of other ones that are out near the Flemington area called Puppylicious and some are down in Red Bank. And, you know, there's a movie called Madonna of the Mills, if you have time. It's a story of a female dog that was in a mill and she lived in horrific, um, conditions. Several years ago, there was a puppy mill store on Route twenty-two in Scotch Plains and the guy would leave the dead dogs in the freezer and he lived in New Jersey and, well, he got his dogs from a breeder. They have breeder, um, people that, I don't know the word that they use, but they're, they go out and they find these puppy mills and then they become like the go-between?
Broker.
Brokers, between the puppy mill stores and the puppy mills and, you know, you got to see the, you got to look at all the pictures that Larry brought you, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I hear another crack?
Thank you, I appreciate it. For Mr. Overstain, we're welcome.
Just so you know, name it.
Larry Cullen, Fanwood, New Jersey. Um, I just want to clarify a couple of things. The reason I gave you this packet is I hope you, I, you keep it with you or close to when you start to hear from other people and organizations who say that they use the best breeders. First of all, the Humane Society could never publish this if it were not true, they'd be sued into oblivion. Second of all, to clarify something we were talking about before, some of these breeders pictured might be, at the time, might have been at the time, in USDA compliance. They might not have had USDA violations, they might have been technically legal to use, but these are the conditions of some of the breeders that these stores will use. I want to give you another short example of what these stores will stoop to. Daniel Gingrich was a dog breeder from Iowa. He had a license in two thousand nineteen, by two thousand twenty-one, he'd been indicted by the Department of Justice. First dog breeder that ever happened to. Now, a New Jersey store can't do business with a breeder if that breeder has, I said, certain violations when they get inspected. It's three, what we call indirect, or one direct within the past two years. Gingrich had a hundred and seventy-six indirect violations. He had twenty-seven direct violations. One makes him illegal. Three indirect make him illegal. He kept doing business, USDA didn't shut him down. In fact, they kept adding locations onto his license. And guess what? Three New Jersey stores used him. We didn't know about it because they left his name off their breeder lists in violation of New Jersey law. Now, there's a backdoor way to get the names of these breeders that somebody like me doesn't have the money or the time to do, but every dog that comes from a breeder in another state has to be accompanied by something called a certificate of veterinary inspection. And the Humane Society has the money and the time to Oprah these CVIs from the states that will release them and go through them and match up the CV. So, we have, we found the CVIs from Gingrich to these New Jersey stores, proving that the stores bought the dogs in violation of the Pet Purchase Protection Act and then they violated it again by not including him on their breeder lists. So, it's, it's a very complex situation and these stores go to a lot of lengths to, um, not be good actors. I'm, I'm sorry to say.
Thanks, thank you. Seeing no one else, so I can motion to close this portion. Thank you, Councilman Mazurela, thank you, Councilman Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mayor Albanese, you have a meeting. Uh, end of meeting comments?
Well, I thank you for your support, uh, my, um, ordinance. I'd like to thank the council for their support on the ordinance tonight. Um, one thing I would like to do, um, and thank you for coming again, those wonderful, feel these comments as well. Uh, I would like to add a proclamation to the agenda for the Girl Scouts that added the Playground Communication Board in the upcoming meeting in September, um, very timely with school starting. So, if we're okay with that, we'll do that, I'll reach out to them. Um, the second item is, um, let's not forget nine eleven, if you can make it, you know, this is for the community as well as, of course, the council, um, on September eleventh, which is a Thursday, not this Thursday, next Thursday, nine o'clock. And we'll be hearing more from Liz about that, how it's gonna work out, okay? Um, that's all I have, I don't know if anyone has any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Albanese, Councilman Dunn.
Just like to say, um, wishing everyone a great, safe, and productive start to the new school year, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dunn, no comments please, time. Councilman Mazurela.
Yes, I first want to thank you for coming before us, it was a real eye-opener, looking at all of these pictures and all of that. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilman Meddy.
Yeah, two things, just, uh, real fast, um, following back to school, um, just remember watching kids as we, you know, want to provide a safe and, uh, you know, great experience for our children in all schools. Uh, and this Friday, September fifth, Crusader football's back home. And ALJ comes to support the Crusaders, um, look forward to a great season by them and, uh, the Booster Club will be opening at Snatch Shack this Friday, so come and support, uh, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Toll.
Yes, I've been getting phone calls because of the road resurfacing that's going on from the utility company and directing everyone to our police department to get the questions answered or any special needs. And again, I want to just compliment Captain Acabo and Captain Lot for their efforts, making sure the residents get in and out. Especially tomorrow will be a little bit more profound with the kids getting back to school. But they're doing the roads and we thank our VA for making this ordinance something in place so the roads are taken care of because they're butchered by the utility company to do the other thing. So, we appreciate everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clark, you have anything?
No, conscious, thank you.
Do you have anything to add?
Um, yeah, first off, Brian started through using the picture.
Yeah.
I, I knew you were gonna put that in for a second. Um, no, I don't even know who it is, I just, I was looking around the room for something that was great size. Two other things, really quick, um, everybody, so they know, we no longer have to call for bulky pickup, right? So, we're doing it wood, you know, when you, first week, wood one, two, three, four, uh, throughout the month. No longer calling, we're doing every street within the wood and we're cleaning them up that way. Um, it just became, you know, a hassle for the residents and then from our side, it was just tracking down. And we ended up figuring out that we hit eighty-five percent of the streets anyway, so it's not gonna be that big of a deal and it just makes it easier for everybody. Um, the other thing is that, you know, again, the tax appeal was about twenty-four thousand dollars and just to remind everybody that, you know, you know, the township only took in about, between the library and the township, six thousand of that. Um, you know, about thirteen thousand went to the school and about five thousand went to the county, so it just, you know, again, another instance where, um, you know, we only got a portion of the amount of the money that was, uh, by the tax court, uh, required to be paid.
Thank you. Counselor, you have anything?
No, I do not.
All right, thank you. Uh, just to dovetail what Brian said about the utilities paving, I'm, I'm glad to see the corner of Raritan and Westfield there. They did the whole square versus a couple batches, so.
That was a long drawn-out nightmare. We had a couple, we had a couple of, um, leaks that kept popping out and one of the things that needed that, Brian, you know, we wanted to get this stuff done sooner, it, it has to sit and it's like when they tear up the, the ground, the ground has to settle, you know, if you do the pavement. So, I mean, that was part of the problem there too, but every time it was settling, it, another leak happened. But I think we're, we're covered now, plus this is valid there to alleviate any, so, a little bit quicker.
It does look better, but, yeah, and reminder, September eleventh, the council will be ready, uh, usually we get there, I want to say eight-thirty-ish, right?
Yeah.
Eight-thirty, 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 eight-forty, so we'll look forward to everyone being there. That's all I have this evening, so motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Thank you, Councilman Toll, second. Thank you, Councilman Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
See you in a couple of weeks, thank you.